Two thousand and nine annual Norfolk Town Meeting will come to order. Thank you, gentlemen. We're joined by Mariah Hughes from Lawrence Street. Mariah, you can come to the stage. Mariah makes regular appearances singing the National Anthem at the Cape Cod Baseball League. She's one of Norfolk's hidden talents. Mariah, thank you so much. The floor is yours. The Scouts will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you to the Boy Scouts of America. Good evening. My name is Dan Winslow. I'm privileged to serve as your Town Moderator. Before we begin the business of the Town Meeting, I'd like to introduce you to several of the people who are here with us on the stage and in front of the stage. To my left, Gail Bernardo, our Town Clerk. To her left, Jack Hathaway. To his left, our newest Selectman, Jim Tomaszewski, Jim Lehan, and Rob Garrity. Arlie Sterling is the Chairman of the Advisory Committee or the Advisory Board. Arlie, if you could please introduce your fellow members.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to introduce Patrick State, our Vice Chairman, Dave Fenton, who will be joining us later, John Burbank, Lisa Kerr, Kathy Elder, Tom Silver, and almost every other person.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My thanks particularly to the Advisory Committee. They function essentially as a Ways and Means Committee overseeing the budget process and to make recommendations to you as Town Meeting members, Town Meeting participants, and they serve long hours without any compensation as volunteers. We're very lucky to have them, and I want to publicly thank them for all of the time that they've given to this budget process.[230.73][230.73](Applause) Town Meeting is a New England tradition dating to colonial times. It's our legislative branch in the town of Norfolk. We invite the executive branch as a courtesy, but this is a legislative function tonight, and you all are participating in direct democracy by being here. All of the decisions, and there's very important decisions on budgets, bylaws, zoning, and other issues in the town of Norfolk, will be decided tonight, and by your attending here tonight, you've decided that you will shape the future of your town, and I want to thank all of you for attending here today. Before we begin, I just want to go over a few ground rules as well as a few changes from prior years. Out at the front of the hall is a two-sheet, or a one-sheet, two-sided sheet, how-to at Town Meeting. Just to highlight it, this year, we have two microphones, a green yes microphone and a red no microphone. We don't have money for a third microphone, which is the question mark microphone, so at any time you have a question without taking a position, feel free to use any microphone. The Advisory Board will place every motion into play before Town Meeting. By going to the yes microphone, they'll make a motion, they'll speak to the motion at the yes microphone. At that moment, anybody is welcome to come down and line up. If you're in favor of something, line up at the green microphone. If you're against something, line up at the red microphone. If you just want to ask a question and you truly don't have a position, go to whichever microphone has the shortest line. That will save us the time of having to have folks walk down. Just line right up at the microphone if you'd like to speak to a matter. I would ask that you confine all of your remarks to me as the moderator. It's sort of an odd thing that we do, but when you speak at Town Meeting, you're actually speaking to the crowd through the moderator, and to encourage that, we've put the TV cameras up front this year so that you'll be able to get good face time as long as you face forward and face the moderator with your comments. We do have a new Town Bylaw this year that places some time limits on speaking, just to make sure that we move the meeting along and that everybody has an equal opportunity to speak, and I'll keep track of time. Basically, the time limit is five minutes the first time you speak, and for the boards, we've brought along a handy egg timer that is sent at five minutes, so we'll keep track of time that way. But for the individual voters who are speaking, I will tell you when your five minutes is almost up, and then after that, it's a three-minute time limit. I'll let you know when your time is almost up so you can wrap up your remarks. People can speak twice on any motion, so if you've finished your time and you still want to speak, just go back to the end of the line, and that way, people who haven't spoken the first time will have a chance to speak before you speak for a second time. Town Meeting is a legislative assembly. It's not a one-on-one dialogue, so sometimes people will come to the microphone and they'll simply want to ask a question, and that's fine, but I may not be able to immediately call on the person who will answer the question. I'll get to them eventually if they wish to be recognized, but I can't facilitate a one-on-one dialogue. People will speak pro or con, and then we'll get to the answers eventually. And I would ask that you listen carefully to all of the other speakers, because we're a pretty smart town, and people don't need to hear the same thing three, four, and five times. So if somebody makes the exact same point that you were going to make, even if you're in line to speak, it's okay to sit down and keep your powder dry for the next argument. The how-to guide tells you how to make an amendment. If you disagree with a proposal on the floor from the Advisory Board, I have forms right here in front of the podium that make it very easy for you to change any proposal by amending to add language, or delete language, or substitute language. And lastly, to cut off debate, if you go to the microphone, any microphone, and simply say, "I move to cut off debate," if the debate's sort of played itself out, in the moderator's discretion, I may take that up, and it's a two-thirds vote without debate. Now, on that, we may have five or six people in line, but nobody's opposing it. If it doesn't seem to be any great disagreement, we may move things to a vote, even if some people haven't had a chance to speak, particularly if they're looking to speak for the second time. And all I would ask is that if you have any questions about procedure, the procedure is to facilitate our dialogue, our debate, and our democracy. So if you have questions, stand up from wherever you are, and you can say, "Mr. Moderator, point of information," or "Point of order," if you think I've gotten it wrong, and I'll be happy to stop the debate and ask you what your point is. With that said, I would ask the Clerk if she would move with respect to the reading.
Mr. Moderator, I move to waive the reading of the warrant and the return of the warrant.
Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded to waive the reading and the return of the Town Meeting warrant. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is a majority vote. The next item of business on the agenda is Article II. Mr. Lehan, I believe, has a motion for the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to change the order of the following articles until after Article eighty-five due to the uncertainty of the safety budgeting process. Article two, which is unpaid bills. Article four, compensation scheduling. Article five, step increases. Article seven, the operating budget. Article eight, water division operating budget. Article ten, capital budget. Article thirteen, public safety funding, building funding. Article twenty-six, stabilization override for two hundred thousand. And Article seventy-nine, which would involve the impacts.
Thank you, Mr. Lehan. What were the articles after Article thirteen?
Article thirteen, Article twenty-six, and Article seventy-nine.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded to change the order of the warrant to move all of these budget-related articles to the end of an order after Article eighty-five. Mr. Lehan, in support of the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. All of these articles are dependent on the funding that we have for our town. Currently, we have the governor's budget, and we have seen the House budget. Tomorrow, we have the Senate budget to spend out. All three of these budgets are different. There will be a reconciliation to these sometime about mid-June, and we're hopeful that we will have more accurate numbers by June sixteenth, which is the date we are hoping to defer to Town Meeting. All of these numbers are terrible. In some instances, they represent as much as a thirty-three percent reduction in state aid for our town. To present to you a good sound budget, we have budgets reflecting each one of these proposals. If we present them to you, we know what the numbers we're going to change. Hopefully, they will change now. Hopefully, they will change in time. But right now, we have such uncertainty around the funding process in the state that we are recommending to you that we defer these articles sometime if we have more concrete information from the state. Our state aid is around four million dollars, so as you can see, it plays a major role in how we fund our programs. We are requesting that these be deferred until after Article eighty-five, which we anticipate will be on June sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Lehan. Is there a recommendation from the Advisory Board? Mr. Sterling, Advisory Board?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, the Advisory Board supports the defer. We do not have the necessary information to make the many regulations. It would be a disservice to the critical decisions that we're trying to go forward with the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Sterling. The motion has been made and seconded to defer the articles that are posted on the screen to the end of the Town Meeting warrant after Article eighty-five. They will not be indefinitely postponed by this vote. They will simply be considered later in the Town Meeting if you vote yes. If you vote no, you will be voting to keep the articles in the order that they're listed currently in the warrant. Is there any further discussion, yea or nay? Please come up to the microphone anytime you'd like to speak yes or no. Just state your name and your street, please.
Matthew Johnson, Priscilla Ave. I'm okay with everything except Article thirteen. I'd like to consider that tonight because that's a huge amount of money for the public safety building assessment, and I'm not at all convinced that that's a prudent use of money by the town considering the environment that we're in today. We have problems with roads not being built, and I just personally, I just can't see spending two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars on evaluating the prospects of building a public safety building when the roads have fallen apart. So I would like to say no to Article thirteen tonight.
So do you want to move to amend the pending motion, which is amendable, to delete the reference to that article from the main motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, why don't you come forward and just fill that out? What was the article number? The motion has been made to delete reference to Article thirteen from the pending motion to defer. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. If you could go to the yes microphone now and speak in support of your motion to amend.[836.04][836.04](Laughter) Go ahead. Go right over to the yes microphone and speak in support of your motion. The motion pending before the Town Meeting is to delete the reference to Article thirteen from the pending motion. Anything further in support of the amendment? Go ahead.
So I've been a resident for something like fifteen years. I've seen three school renovations, I've seen two towns built, and libraries, new town center, and fancy streetlights, block towers, and whatnot. And I feel, to me, what I see is a lot of pain, not just scariness and death, but, you know, if you're flawed, doing something like that is good, is fine. I'm okay with that. But when you got a pinch, and, you know, the road is full ice, every day I'm driving on Medway Street, and, you know, I crawl down about, you know, ten, fifteen miles an hour, and I'm still in the dark. And so when I see the streets falling apart, and I see fancy streetlights getting put up instead of fixing the streets, when we have, you know, we're kind of north of, like, even seventeen percent, upper seventeen percent in terms of tax rate in this entire state. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm not prepared to spend another nickel on anything until the roads get taken care of.
Very good.
So I feel pretty strong about that. So that's it.
Thank you very much. The motion has been made and seconded to amend by deleting the reference to Article thirteen. If you vote yes, Article thirteen will remain in the warrant as is. If you vote no, the main motion as proposed by the Selectman will be continued for further debate. Any further discussion on this matter? Mr. Hathaway, Town Administrator?
I question whether or not we should debate the points of merit of Article thirteen right now or whether it's amended. I'll leave that bigger discussion aside for a moment and just say that this is clearly a financial discussion. We need to know how much money the state is going to buy for us in state aid. There was just, as Mr. Lehan said, there was a huge amount of validity in the budget right now. We can't really have very soft, you know, a very meaningful debate about any of these financial matters until we resolve what the state aid is. I'd be happy to debate the merits of the building project if it were to be directed at that.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Any further discussion, pro or con, on the motion to amend? The motion to amend is to delete Article thirteen from the deferral motion. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the amendment. That would take Article thirteen out of this motion and leave it on the warrant as proposed. If you vote no, the amendment is defeated and will return back to the debate on the main motion. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
It is not a majority vote. We'll return now to the debate on the motion to defer as listed on the board. Any further arguments for or against? If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of deferring all of the listed articles until after Article eighty-five. We will take them up after Article eighty-five in the warrant. If you vote no, you're voting to keep them in the warrant as listed, and we'll take them up in turn. All in favor of the motion to defer, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, it is a majority vote. Those articles as listed are all deferred until after Article eighty-five. The next item on the agenda is something called a consent calendar. If you turn to your Advisory Board recommendations on page sixty-four, excuse me, page sixty-two. This is a new procedure this year. We have a consent calendar which lists non-controversial or routine articles, and what we'll do is I'll read through all of them. If you wish to have a debate on these, just say "hold," and I'll hold them in the warrant in the ordinary course when they're supposed to be debated in turn. If you don't hold it, what we'll simply do is we'll have a yes or no vote without debate on all of these things, and we'll deal with all of them without debate as a simple yes or no vote. The exception to this is Article seventy-nine, which was just held out by the motion to defer, will be held from the consent calendar. So I'm going to read through these. If you wish to have a full debate, we'll deal with these things in the warrant as listed. If you don't wish to have a full debate, say nothing, and we'll get through this, and we'll simply have an up or down vote at the end of the consent calendar. Article twenty-four, Article forty-nine, Article fifty-five.
O.
Article fifty-six.
O.
Article sixty-eight. Article seventy-nine was held on the moderator's motion. Article eighty, Article, is there a hold on Article eighty?
Hold.
Article eighty-one, Article eighty-two.
Hold.
Hold on eighty-one? Article eighty-two.
Hold.
Article eighty-three, Article eighty-four. The articles that are not held are Articles twenty-four, forty-nine, and eighty-three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Articles twenty-four, forty-nine, and eighty-three are all approved by majority vote. The balance of the consent calendar will be considered in turn as listed on the warrant. Article three, Mr. Waldman, Advisory Board.
Before I fill in Article three, there are details, articles, there are details, or pieces of paper, you do not have any notes, so those are books. You do not have a table on the way in. There's no way we're going to follow them. So I would suggest, if you're interested in this article, you go ahead and tap in for two minutes. We have a proper number here. If anybody needs this, raise your hand up high.
Raise your hand if you'd like a copy. The Scouts will distribute them. Share some with your colleagues there, and we'll split them up. Thank you, guys. Mr. Waldman, as the copies are being passed out, if you could just speak to the merits.
If this article is deferred, it just stated that.
Tech, could we have the microphone on or turned up, please? Thank you. I had nothing to do with that, Mark.[1304.75][1304.75](Laughter)
Okay. We stated previously, as you heard, we are going to defer all of the financial articles until hopefully June sixteenth. So the first question in everyone's mind is, why are you handing me a piece of paper that's got nothing but numbers on it? The difference with this article, as opposed to all the others that we have asked to defer, is this is an article that affects the current fiscal year, affects the year that will end this coming June thirtieth, and this is an article that's always on the Town Meeting warrant. And the reason it's on the Town Meeting warrant, most of these, you're going to find, are movements of monies between what's been appropriated as a salary account to what's previously appropriated as an expense account, or vice versa. And the reason for that is only Town Meeting is vested in that authority to move money previously appropriated for one of those purposes to the other purpose. So only you people can take action on this. And again, these are monies that are affecting the current year's budget, so that's why we are going ahead with this kind of work now. So I will read the motion in three separate blocks. This is from the Speaker. Mr. Moderator, I move that we transfer from finance salaries, the amount of eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars, from DPW administration, the amount of five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars, from ground maintenance, three thousand, three hundred and eight dollars, from cemetery salaries, one thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars, from vehicle maintenance salaries, one thousand, five hundred and eight dollars, from library salaries, eleven thousand dollars, from fire fines, six hundred and ninety dollars, from ambulance receipts, two thousand dollars, from the balance of the capital article for an engineering feasibility study, four thousand, seven hundred dollars, from capital article for a highway truck, four fifty, four thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars, from capital article for a story field groomer, one thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents, for a phone transfer from one hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. And those monies will be transferred to finance accounting expense, eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six, to fire miscellaneous expense, six hundred and ten dollars, to fire training, two thousand dollars, to highway salaries, eleven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, to DPW vehicle maintenance inspectors, expense, ten thousand, one dollar and seventy-five cents, to library general operating, six thousand dollars, to library adult books, three thousand dollars, and to library reference, two thousand dollars, for total transfers to one hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Thank you. Is there a second? Sorry, second. I need to be able to turn it off. Pardon. Thank you. Mr. Waldman, in support of the motion?
So this is the, more or less, the general operating accounts that we are covering. And just as sort of general explanations, the first line, the second biggest line in this whole transfer program, the eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. The town has been without a finance director slash town accountant position for the bulk of this fiscal year, and much of those accounting services has been contracted out. Contracting is an expense, not a salary. So the money was originally appropriated for the position in salaries. We're simply asking that it be moved to cover the bills in the expenditure portion of the budget. That's the eighty-nine thousand. The combination of the four DPW salary amounts coming from and are going to highway salaries, and again, this involves a position that we actually did have and created, which is called the Highway Foreman. This is the head person in the Highway Department. We have a Director of Public Works, and then Foreman in each of the divisions underneath. We did create and fill the Highway Foreman position and did that this year, but did not have the budget, so those monies were scattered amongst the other salary lines for DPW administration grounds, maintenance, cemetery, and vehicle maintenance. So we're simply putting those over to cover that Foreman's position through the end of this fiscal year. Library salaries at eleven thousand dollars, there were positions that was unfilled in the library, and what the library has requested, sort of in anticipation of what may be coming next year and possibly taking some serious hits, they have asked that we take the money that they have been able to save because of not funding a position, or not filling a position, and move that into certain expense categories so in advance of next year's cuts, maybe they can buy some of the supplies this year, and we thought that was a good idea. The ambulance receipts to training is training that we have provided to the dispatchers at the police and fire station in order so that those dispatchers can provide a certain amount of care over the phone in advance of the paramedics actually arriving at the location, a specialized training. Again, very admirable use of funds, we thought, and the fees were available. And then the final three items there, those are previous capital appropriations that Town Meeting made. The items were, in all cases, were bought, and these are, at the time, you fund these things, you take a guess at what you think they're going to cost. All three of these things had funds available after the equipment was purchased, and those monies are being recommended to purchase a vehicle inspection machine for the Highway Department, just like you and me with our cars. Every year, we have to take our public vehicles in to have them inspected and pay for those. The idea being that if we had the inspection equipment in-house, our people could perform the inspections. It's estimated that the payback on this ten thousand dollars is just a little over two years in terms of not paying a private vendor to inspect it and us doing ourselves. So again, we thought that was a very good use of the funds. So that is the bulk of the first part of the transfer article.
Thank you, Mr. Waldman. Why don't we put all three parts into play at the same time? The second aspect of the motion, please.
The second and scariest one. Mr. Moderator, I move that we transfer from free cash, the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars, and from the snow and ice revolving account, the amount of fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars, and that a total of three hundred and sixty-one thousand, eighty-one dollars be transferred to snow and ice expense to cover this current year's deficit in the snow and ice budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Waldman, would you wish to speak to that aspect of the motion?
If any of you lived through this winter as I did, it was brutal, and unfortunately, brutal particularly in terms of when the snow and ice incident[1759.32][1759.32](Music) is primarily evenings and started very early this year. We appropriate a hundred and one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars a year for our snow and ice budget. It's the same amount that we've been appropriating probably for the last twenty years. Snow and ice is one of the only items under Massachusetts state law that a municipality is allowed to run a deficit in. That deficit then has to be made up either in that fiscal year or, again, one of the only accounts where the deficit can be brought over to the next fiscal year. It has been Norfolk's policy, if at all possible, to not carry that deficit to the following year. year because that just throws the following year that much further behind. We have about $411,000 total in our free cash fund. This is obviously going to vastly deplete that sum of money. But again, you're looking at a snow event, snow and ice budget event for this year in excess of $400,000. So this has to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Waldman. And if you could just put the third, the last piece of that puzzle into play, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move we transfer from water retained earnings, $180,357, and transfer that to a water leak issue for calendar year 2009, $93,141, a water leak issue for calendar 2008, the fall of, $63,629, and to water chemical, a chemical increase in water supplies, $23,587, for a total transfer to Water Enterprise Fund of $180,357.
Thank you, Mr. Waldman. Speak to the motion, please.
This is all money within the water fund. The water is what's known as an enterprise fund, so it's self-supporting. All the monies raised by fees stay within the water department. But we do have a budget that we approve specific line items. So in this particular case, some of you may recall that there was quite a visible issue, I know it went before the selectmen regarding the failure of some people's water pipes on private property. There was a great debate about what was causing these failures. They were scattered in a number of neighborhoods around town. Eventually, the Board of Selectmen decided that we would create a program where we would, the town would fund the repairs to these pipes, put the money up front, and then the property owner would pay the town back over a series of years for at least a significant portion of that. So what this is doing with the $180,000, the first two parts of that, about almost $160,000, is those pipe repairs. And then the $23,000 part of that is to, we have made certain changes to the chemical compounds within the water because there was a suspicion that this may have been the cause of some of the pipe failures. So there were certain changes made to the chemical makeup in the water and in terms of, we had to then buy the specific chemicals in use. And don't ask me to explain specifically what was done there, but...
Thank you, Mr. Waldman. Interdepartmental transfers is proposed by the Advisory Board. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. It is a majority vote. Article number six, Mr. Waldman.
Mr. Moderator, I request that we defer Article six until after Article 85 is dealt with.
After Article 79? Article 79 now being the last article at the warrant?
Article 79, correct.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Waldman, in support of the motion?
This is, on the surface, although controversial, appears to be a non-financial article. So the question is, why are we now asking that it be dealt with, similar to what we've done with the other budget and financial articles? This was proposed at somewhat of a late date by the Board of Selectmen and is somewhat of an outgrowth of the previous budget discussions that we have had. As this was proposed to the affected boards a couple of weeks ago, it became clear at a meeting, a joint meeting of the Advisory Board and the Selectmen and the invited boards, that this was quite a major change being thrust upon those boards with fairly short notice. And I think everybody quickly came to an understanding that this thing needed to be vetted a little bit more. So almost everybody in the room sort of agreed. We knew at that point, we were asking you to allow us to come back on or about June 16th. You know, that's adding a good four weeks to the process. That would give us time to further vet this through the affected boards, to allow them to give their input back. The other reason that we're doing this is, I don't think it should be anybody surprised that there will be budget cuts next year, possibly significant budget cuts as a result of the loss of revenues. And this is going to affect a lot of budgets and it's going to affect a lot of departments in terms of their operations. And the other thought behind this article and the reason it sort of grew out of initial budget discussions is, could it possibly, for, none of these affected boards, or I think three of the four affected boards, do not even have a full-time staff personnel that they are sharing services. So we could be looking at the possibility of cutting from what already is a part-time to even further part-times. And that really lends itself to discussion about, are there better ways to provide those services, having people share jobs if possible? But it needs to be done in the context of ultimately what is going to happen to these and other department budgets. So it really is, even though it's a bylaw change and it seems to be affecting the way certain boards operate, it really does have budget implications as well. And we felt very appropriate that this be dealt with in the context of June 16th or later.
Thank you, Mr. Waldman. The motion has been made and seconded to defer Article six to the end of the warrant. That is after the location now of Article 79. It's not an indefinite postponement. We will deal with the matter on its merits at that time. Is there any further discussion or debate? All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. It is a majority vote. Article six is now deferred until after Article 79. Article nine, Kathy Elder, Advisory Board.
Mr. Moderator, I move we indefinitely postpone Article nine as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Elder, for the Advisory Board?
The Board of Selectmen is not recommending the transfer of any money from the general fund to the Vehicle Stabilization Fund, so it's not even...
Any further discussion or debate? All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Article nine is indefinitely postponed. Article 11, Ms. Elder, Advisory Board?
Mr. Moderator.
Please step up to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Terrio, CPC 57, Rockwood Road. I move to defer Article 11 until after Article 65.
The motion has been made to defer Article 11 until after Article 65. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Terrio, in support of your motion?
Yes, the CPC is currently presenting 10 budgetary articles relating to administrative and project-based proposals. We feel that all the CPC articles should be considered together. In addition, this motion will also have a direct impact on moving CPC initiatives forward. This motion will also have an impact on the rate of state match as well.
Thank you, Mr. Terrio. The motion has been made and seconded to defer Article 11's discussion until after Article 65. Is there any further debate or discussion? If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of holding Article 11 till after Article 65 and considering all of the CPC articles together. If you vote no, we will continue to consider Article 11 right now. All in favor of deferral, say aye. Opposed, no? It is a majority vote. I will count it if any seven voters stand to ask for a counted vote. Article 11 is held till after Article 65. Article 12, Ms. Elder, Advisory Board?
Mr. Moderator, I recommend approval of Article 12 as written in the warrant.
Ms. Elder, for the Advisory Board?
Under a memorandum of agreement associated with the purchase of land from the Federated Church, the town is contractually obligated to provide a mechanism to establish reciprocal easements to accommodate overflow parking needs between the town's public safety property and the Federated Church lot. This article authorizes the Board of Selectmen to grant and acquire an easement at their sole discretion, acting on behalf of the town.
Thank you, Ms. Elder. Any further discussion or debate? All in favor of Article 12 as presented, say aye. Opposed, no? It is a majority vote. Does Mr. Counsel, does a majority vote suffice us?
Yes.
Thank you. A majority vote. For the record, I'll call that as a two-thirds vote. I'll count it if seven voters stand up and ask to be counted. Article 14, Mr. Sneed, Advisory Board?
Mr. Moderator, I move we approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Sneed, for the Advisory Board?
This is the approval for the Board of Selectmen to accept the donation of a house given to the town to be moved to property owned by the town, and the resulting house on the land to be either sold or donated to Habitat for Humanity. The result of this will be an increase in the affordable housing stock of the town.
Thank you, Mr. Sneed. This Article 14 is submitted by the Affordable Housing Trust. Is there someone here for the Affordable Housing Trust? Mr. Crump?
Bill Crump, 46 Mass Ave, part of the Affordable Housing Trust. This article was presented to the town last year and largely was defeated on the basis that we just basically hadn't provided the town with enough support and information to move this article to pass. So I'd like to, Bob, if you could go through the presentation real quick.
Bill, could you stand up to the microphone a bit further? Thank you.
Oh, it is working. Okay. Sorry about that. Yeah, sure. Largely, a lot of the questions that popped up were, who will manage the project? We've partnered with Habitat for Humanity, who has a significant track record in providing affordable housing throughout the area. And we've actually invited one of the representatives, Chuck Dean, from Habitat to speak a little later on, right after I do my presentation. Who will fund this project? The parcel's being donated as part of the town-owned parcel to Habitat for Humanity, so Habitat will bear the cost of the project. Who will be liable for the hidden costs? Much the same way as the funding of the project. Habitat for Humanity will be responsible for that. How is the site, or how suitable is the site for development? We've actually gone through and spent some money last year in delineating the property boundaries, any wetland issues. There are going to be some issues relative to square footage, meeting the minimum square footage requirement, and that would require a variance that Habitat for Humanity would obviously see through the process. Test pits have been done. The site perks for a three-bedroom room, similar to the one that's being offered and donated, which is literally three lots down. That house is being donated by the original owners. Variances, as I discussed, will be sought by Habitat for Humanity. And any development costs associated with that, clearly, again, I can't stress enough, Habitat for Humanity is bearing that cost. Is the house suitable for the site? Absolutely, without question. We've had not only contractors come and take a look at it from Habitat for Humanity, again, delineated the wetlands, delineated setbacks and boundaries. Structurally, the house is on pallets and has been for a year or so, and contractors have gone through it and, again, have found that it is structurally sound. The house has existed in the same area for the better part of 60 years. Site plan supports placement of the house, subject to variances, which will be sought by the ZBA. All of the setbacks are in pretty good shape. Bob, the next one, please. Some of the concerns that we wanted to address directly were specifically abutters and neighborhood concerns. That's the loss of close to an acre of wooded buffer between houses. One of the abutters has a horse paddock. It is concerned that placing a house in this area may divert sort of the geo- aqua or water issues through there. But again, Habitat will be working with them on that. Another abutter owns a large antique house on the side, which is concerned about a potential loss in value. Another abutter would like to ensure that the house is not located at the back of the lot to cut down trees, which may affect the runoff into Kingsbury Pond. You guys don't have, there's a package that was out at the table. One of the things that's not in there is actually the site plan that has been professionally prepared. And as you can see here, this is a panoramic view. What we've done is we've basically taken the picture of the house and superimposed it on the lot, at least as we see it for, or as it relates to the setbacks. I'm sorry, the house on the left-hand side would be the house that is going to be situated That house right there. Thanks, Bob. Clearly the benefits, and then I'll wrap up. By doing this, it'll put the property back on the tax rolls and increase revenue to the town. It adds another unit of affordable housing to our stock. It strengthens the town's standing within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as a town that's pursuing affordable housing alternatives within the town. Begins to strengthen the town's leverage with developers utilizing current 40B guidelines. Combines a house that is already in the neighborhood with a small vacant town-owned lot to create an affordable unit at no cost to the town. And supports and contributes to a green project by reusing the existing house. And next, I'd like to invite Chuck Dean from Habitat for Humanity to speak on behalf of Habitat.
Mr. Crump, have you concluded your remarks?
My remarks.
Okay, I'm going to just turn to the no microphone for a moment as a courtesy, and then we'll come back to your guest. At the no microphone, I have given permission for a non-resident to join us here tonight. Mr. Newhall, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm Bill Newhall. I own the abutting house and soon-to-be resident, we hope, on 11 Leland Road. Keep my comments brief, as you guys have a ton of articles to get through. This article is taking up, giving up a lot of green if Norfolk Finance is giving you a lot of red. The land's worth $128,000 on the books. A straight donation has cost the taxpayers then $128,000 there. If you heard tonight, Habitat for Humanity's goal is to place a family in that house. A home with children will cost more than whatever property taxes can be collected. Better option for the town, perhaps, is to auction off this asset and turn it into cash for the town. If you do that, there won't be any further financial burden to the town, and the town getting perhaps another $1,700 per year in taxes will no further call on its services. As to its, having been in the neighborhood, it has been in the neighborhood, but three house lots down, it makes quite a difference whether it's three house lots down or right next door. I'm not concerned so much with the value of my house as I am with what it's going to mean to wake up in the morning with a person right, it's going to be just right at my back door. It's going to be a lot closer than that picture depicts. It's a rather, I'm not civil engineer enough, but there are enough concerns there that that lot hadn't been built on for, I don't know how many years. I don't really have anything much else to say, just it's going to cost you money to make something that you may wish you hadn't made when you get done with it. And any other people that have small lots of abutting, this ought to perhaps give them cause to think whether they want to pass legislation to make it more convenient to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Newhall. I'll return now to the yes microphone. Mr. Crump, before I invite your guest to the microphone, Town Council has pointed out that on Article 14, it actually has a choice of three entities that would purchase the property, the Board of Selectmen, the Affordable Housing Trust, or other suitable municipal agency. And at Town Council's recommendation, the offer would be to friendly amend out reference to the Board of Selectmen or other suitable municipal agency, leaving in the transfer to the Affordable Housing Trust only. Is that accepted as a friendly amendment? So on the third line of the, third line of Article 14 is printed in the warrant, strike the words "Board of" down to the next line, "Selectmen," leave, and strike out the word "the" just before Affordable Housing Trust, and then strike out "or other suitable municipal agency." So as amended, it would read to, to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of the general laws to transfer the care, custody, and control of the land at Leland Road, shown on the reference to Sessors Maps, to the Affordable Housing Trust for the purpose of accepting the relocation of a dwelling structure now located at a different address. Is that accepted as a friendly amendment by the Affordable Housing Trust?
Yes.
Thank you. Your guest, Mr. Crump? Thank you. Your guest, Mr. Crump?
Mr. Chuck Dean, Habitat for Humanity.
Mr. Heath from Habitat for Humanity, welcome to Norfolk Town Meeting. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Chuck Dean. I'm from the town of Franklin. I'm also on the Board of Directors for Old Colony Habitat for Humanity. I appreciate the invitation to be here and just want to take this opportunity to introduce the town to Old Colony Habitat for Humanity. I think probably most people have heard of us. We were founded in 1976 by Millard and Linda Fuller. We've got 2,200 affiliates here in the U.S., of which Old Colony is one of them, 726 campus chapters. You can kind of read what's up there. Essentially, we've helped house over a million people worldwide. The local affiliates here, for any non-directed funds, we actually do a 10% tithe to support some of those international efforts that you may see get quite a bit of publicity around the world in undeveloped nations. Locally, Old Colony Habitat for Humanity, we really talk about giving families a hand up, not a handout. One of the things that we run into quite a bit is perhaps some misconceptions about how Habitat does what we do. We have a pretty rigorous family selection process. Our goal is to bring families into homeownership that might not otherwise have the chance. We do not give them a home. We select families based on, I just can't lean over, I'll pass out, certainly where they are relative to HUD, the HUD median income, but we also select them based on a demonstrated ability to pay a mortgage and their bills and taxes and car payments. So we go through a full financial vetting of the families to make sure that they can be successful in the home. They currently are living in substandard housing, and they also demonstrate a willingness to partner. The family has to put in over 200 hours towards their house in order to be eligible to move in, and there's ongoing partnership. Relative to how we keep the house costs down, certainly donations in kind or in labor go a long way in bringing down the cost of a house. We get quite a bit of material and in-kind service donations, and when we have a build, there's no shortage of volunteers to help put the house up. It's quite a remarkable thing. And certainly, there is the labor from the family, but there's also ongoing support. The families who are selected are supported both in assistance with budgeting, assistance with financial planning, and even after they're in the home, we don't abandon them and check that off. We continue to partner with them in home maintenance, electrical work, whatever, so that it really is a partnership on a go-forward basis. The funding, they pay a mortgage. Habitat for Humanity funds the mortgage. We fund an interest-free mortgage. We work with the duration of the mortgage. We don't like to exceed 30 years, but to get the payment in line so that they can comfortably pay the mortgage and their taxes and all the other debts they have to run the household. Again, we take the mortgage, we take a look at where they are, sometimes acting as the bank, we work with them. We recently had a family in Norton whose husband had a slight heart attack and was out of work for about eight weeks, and we suspended their mortgage payments for two months. He got back to work, and they got back on to paying the mortgage. So we're a little bit different in that we can really partner with the family to make sure that they can continue to be successful. As far as homeownership, the homeowner does build equity in the home. Again, their payments go towards reducing the amount of the mortgage. If, for some reason, they were to move, and thus far, that's not been a big occurrence just because of the price of the house and whatnot, the sale price for the house is indexed towards the movement of the wages in the area. So if it's a $100,000 house and, you know, wages moved up 3%, the house would sell for $103,000. There'll be deed restrictions, so those homes cannot be flipped. They come back to Habitat to go through another family selection process. Typically, what we do, anywhere from 950 to 1,250, 1,300 square-foot homes for the single-family, we've done multifamily homes. We will rehab decaying structures. We will work with you on your local zoning standards as well as our own standards, state of Massachusetts, and if they need to be handicapped accessible, we will do that as well. Some of the projects that our local affiliate has done, this is not to speak to our affiliates in Boston and Cape Cod and what have you, we've built a three-unit condominium in Attleboro, three separate single-family homes in Norton, and most recently, we just completed a single-family home in the town of Plainville, and we hope to have a dedication with that new family coming up in the next two months.
You have half a minute, sir.
Thank you. And, next one. And that's one of the homes we built in Norton. We built that one in 2002. So a little bit of an introduction to Habitat. Hopefully, we'll be able to work together a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody at the no microphone who wishes to speak against this proposal? Step right up. State your name, please, for the record.
Mike Taurasi, Turner Street, Norfolk. First, the first issue here is that somewhere in the Habitat for Humanity charter, I understand that you're a religious organization, or that is, you're based on a certain religious belief, and I don't know if, on that basis, I really want to give my property to any particular religion. And second is that the gentleman that was here before made a couple of good points as far as the economic sense it makes for us to hang on to the property, even if we went through a mitigation process with one of our very ambitious developers in town and have them build for us an affordable house. We will accomplish the same thing as far as affordable housing, and we will still have the control over it so that whatever happens eternally, or internally, I should say, is going to, is going to still stay with our benefit. In short, the town of Norfolk would benefit more by hanging on to the property than giving away to Habitat for Humanity.
Thank you, Mr. Taurasi. Any further discussion at the yes microphone? Anybody else wish to be recognized who's not yet spoken? Yes, Mr. Boucher, please come to the yes microphone.
Mr. Moderator?
Just a moment, I'll have, you defer, Mr. Boucher? Okay, the gentleman yields. Mr. Heath?
Just to answer the question, we are Christian-based, but we are not discriminatory against any religion or whether or not someone has a religion. So it is not a church-based donation. Again, it's not a nonprofit parcel. It would be tax generating.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion at the no microphone?
This is a point of information.
Mr. Boucher on a question of information.
In line 246 of the motion, it's to sell or donate. Can we vote, leaving that ambiguity in the article?
Just a question on clarification. Mr. Crump, is the proposal to sell the land to Habitat for Humanity or to donate it to Habitat for Humanity?
I think the intent is to donate it.
So would that be accepted as a friendly amendment, simply to make that change, to clarify it?
Yes.
So the Municipal Housing Trust strikes "sell or" in that line just referenced. It will say to further authorize said agency to donate the land and the building to be located thereon to Habitat for Humanity by any lawful means. Any further discussion at the yes microphone, further discussion at the no microphone? Mr. Taurasi? You just, line right up, Mike, and I'll call you when you're at the mic.
Just to clarify the point that you clarified, sir, it's a Christian organization. In the charter, it states clearly that you are a religious organization, and that as a point of, point of law and convenience for people who may not be Christians, they may want to say, well, we want to give this to one of our denominations or sects instead. So that's the only point I have.
Thank you, Mr. Taurasi. Any further discussion at the yes microphone? Mr. Crump?
Yeah, just to add a point with regards to affordable housing in the town. Presently, our stock is about 3.2%, and we're trying to get to a 10% threshold. Today, we need to be doing something to move towards that. We need to bring affordable housing into this town in an effort to try to mitigate any aggressive 40B developments that may come in. Yes, we're clearly a distance from 3 to 10, but we need to start someplace, and right now, we're a little shy, and here's a great opportunity for us.
Thank you, Mr. Crump. Is anybody not yet spoken who wishes to speak in the no column tonight? Anybody else who's not yet spoken who wishes to speak in the yes column? Mr. Hughes, if you'd just state your name for the record?
Kevin Hughes, Lawrence Street. As someone who's been involved with affordable housing, I think one of the things we have to keep in mind with this is that this article is to transfer the land to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The building of the house is going to be subject to, and the siting of the house is subject to zoning, so they have to still go through their approvals and all the different things to get the house approved. But it is, there is so little opportunity with land that's available and able to be built on that's affordable, that we should not let this opportunity go through our fingers. We've looked, and I know we've worked with, on the CPC, at looking at a number of different opportunities, and it's, and they're either very, very expensive, or the land is not at all suitable. And in this situation, we have a piece of property that is suitable, and we have a house that, I drove by it, it's sitting on stilts and things over there waiting, that a family could be living in and contributing tax money to this town. So I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Is anybody else who's not yet had a chance to speak wish to speak in the no column? Anybody else who's not yet had a chance to speak wish to speak in the yes column? Under the new town meeting procedure bylaw, the maximum time per side is two times at the mic. Sir, would you like to go to the yes microphone? Mr. Roach?
Dave Roach, School Street. I think anytime any organization's going to step up and offer to do affordable housing, we should work with them. I mean, this is a, this is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. The ZBA, I would hope, would work with them to approve this lot for this affordable house, obviously in perpetuity, I would assume, but at 3.2%, we're wide open for, for, you know, affordable housing complexes to come into the town. Probably been shying away from us because we don't have sewer, and we don't have the big amenities that some of the bigger towns have, but sooner or later, we're going to get that. But I've also seen the house, I think it's a, it's a complete waste to throw that thing in the dumpster where we could go three lots down the street. The moving costs are very reasonable. I know personally, I looked at this house to possibly move it over to Franklin on a lot that was available over there. It just wasn't feasible with the trees on the street and everything. This is a no-brainer, and I absolutely agree. Even though we may not be taking a lot of tax money in on this, this is a family that's coming to the town, and through excise taxes and the CAS and everything like that, I think this is a great deal.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Is anybody who's not yet had a chance to speak wish to speak in the no column? Anybody else who's not yet had a chance to speak wish to speak in the yes column? Hearing none, if you vote yes, you're voting to approve Article 14. Because it involves the transfer of land, it requires a 2/3rds vote. The motion, as submitted in the warrant, has been amended by friendly amendment. On the third and fourth lines, deleting "Board of Selectmen" and the word "the," leaving only the words Affordable Housing Trust, and then deleting "or other suitable municipal agency." Continuing down three lines below that, where it says "said agency to sell or," the words "sell or" are stricken. So as amended with respect to those portions, talks about transferring custody or control of a land to the Affordable Housing Trust for the purpose of accepting the relocation of a dwelling structure now located at 23 Leland Road, and further to authorize said agency, said agency being the Affordable Housing Municipal Trust for the town of Norfolk, said agency to donate the land and the building to be located thereon to Habitat for Humanity, and is otherwise printed in the warrant. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor. If you vote no, you're voting against. Because it involves the transfer of land, it requires a 2/3rds vote. All in favor of Article 14, say aye?
Aye.
Pose no?
No.
It is a 2/3rds vote. I will count it if any seven voters stand up and wish to have a counted vote. Article number 15. I want to thank, before the boys leave, the Boy Scouts are working on their Eagle badge. Thank them for all of their time that they get us here today. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Article 15, Ms. Elder, Advisory Board.
Mr. Moderator, I move we indefinitely postpone Article 15 as printed in the warrant.
Ms. Elder, Advisory Board?
The school committee has recently voted to use current-year funds to install smoke detectors at Freeman Centennial. This article is no longer needed.
Thank you. Any further discussion or debate on Article 15? The motion is to indefinitely postpone. If you vote yes, you're voting to IP or indefinitely postpone Article 15. If you vote no, you're voting against that motion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose no? It is a majority vote. Article 16, Mr. Sneed.
Mr. Moderator, I move we indefinitely postpone Article 16.
Mr. Sneed, Advisory Board?
This is an expense that the town has to incur every three years. It was the feeling of the advisory committee, and the town officials agreed that this should just be part of the normal operating budget, not something that's specially appropriated every three years since it's a recurring expense. And that, in fact, is what has been done with this amount. It's being paid from the operating budget. The special appropriation requested here is not necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Sneed. This is a motion submitted by the Board of Assessors. Does anybody from the Board of Assessors wish to speak with respect to this article? Does anybody wish to speak at the no microphone? Any further debate? If you vote yes, you're voting to indefinitely postpone Article 16 as proposed by the Advisory Board. If you vote no, you're voting in the negative to that motion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose no? Article 16 is indefinitely postponed by a majority vote. Article 17, Mr. Sneed.
Mr. Moderator, I move we indefinitely postpone Article 17.
Mr. Sneed?
This is the same expense. This article was an attempt to spread the $35,000 over three years, but technically, it's not possible to appropriate money in advance of the current fiscal year, so the motion would fail for technical reasons, but as previously stated, this expense is being covered through the operating budget, so it's not needed for two reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Sneed. Article 17 is submitted by the Board of Assessors. Does anybody from the Board of Assessors wish to speak to the article? Anybody at the no microphone? Any further discussion or debate? If you vote aye, yes, you're voting in favor of Article 17 being indefinitely postponed. If you vote no, you're voting in the negative. Article 17, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose no? It is approved by majority vote to indefinitely postpone Article 17. Article 18, Mr. Sneed, Advisory Board?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we approve Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Sneed, for the Advisory Board?
This is an expenditure to update the town's master plan, master water plan. This is something that is generally recommended be done for a town approximately every 10 years. It has been somewhat over that, over that amount of time, and it is the feeling of the DPW that it is now time to update our plan. This money will be funded from the retained earnings of the Water Division. It is not an expense of the town, of the town's operating budget.
Thank you, Mr. Sneed. Any further comment from the Department of Public Works that submitted the article? Any, Mr. Vito, Department of Public Works?
Mr. Moderator, Butch Vito, Director, Public Works. Just to give you a little history on this, the last master water plan was done in 1992. We consolidated into the DPW in the early 2000s. We revisited the master plan, but at that time, we didn't approach the town to do anything as far as an update. The town master plan was done in 2007, and now we feel that we need to do our master plan to prepare ourselves for next year's rates. It's rates and withdrawals that we need, and master plan will get us there.
Thank you, Mr. Vito, for the DPW. Anybody at the negative microphone, anybody who wishes to speak against the proposal? Any further persons who wish to speak in favor of the proposal? If you vote yes on Article 18, you're voting to approve. The article is printed in the warrant. If you vote no, you're voting against that proposal. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose no? Article 18 is approved by majority vote. Article 19, Mr. Sneed, Advisory Board?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we approve Article 19 as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Sneed?
This is an expenditure of $165,000, again, from retained earnings of the Water Division, not from the town's operating budget. The purpose of this is the first phase of developing a well at the Gold Street Complex. This is the well complex that is anticipated will meet the town's water needs for the foreseeable future, and is, plays a major role in the giving us the water we'll need for pretty much the indefinite future. And if Mr. Vito wishes to comment further, I will defer to his expertise.
Thank you. This is an article submitted by the DPW. Does anybody from the DPW wish to speak to Article 19? Mr. Vito, DPW?
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, Butch Vito, Department of Public Works Director. This year, in 2002, we actually did some exploration throughout the whole town to see what sources we could find for water within the town boundaries. At the Gold Street site, we found two other wells that we could drill up there. One we drilled last year, it's a supplement well, it's very close to the existing well, can only be used in emergencies. The well that we're pursuing now will be a permitted well, and allow us for another 350 gallons a minute. This well will bring us up to our maximum demand that we're projecting out in the next five to 10 years. So this is a well that we need to get online. Our maximum demand rates right now are starting to creep up on us with development coming in the future, and according to the master plan, we're going to need at least a million gallons a day. This well will bring us up to that amount.
Thank you, Mr. Vito. Is there anybody who wishes to speak against the proposal? Article 19?
Just, just a comment. Andy Bakunowski, Nagatuck Avenue. I'm not a water taker, but Butch, you and I've had many discussions about green and sustainability, and what I don't understand, you already have a second well there. The third well going in doesn't necessarily give you more water you can withdraw from the entire well complex because of the Water Management Plan, Water Management Act restrictions. I don't understand why you can't take half this, well, actually after half a million dollars, invest it back into the system, provide rebates to water takers, cut down the use that way, and deal with that 350 gallons a minute by water conservation on the user end, rather than just simply supplying more water? That really, you, you can't exceed whatever the permitted limit is for that well.
Thank you, Mr. Vito. Did you answer that question?
Yes, if I could just answer that. Actually, we have two issues, Andy. Spruce Street well is high chloride in it right now, and we're starting to see failure because it's sucking iron in. So in fear of losing the Spruce Street well, which is a high-year well, we need to put another well online and come back to Spruce Street as more or less a backup well during the summer months. But our total usage projected out is a million gallons a day demand. We don't have but 800,000 right now.
Thank you, Mr. Bakunowski, for a second time at the no microphone.
I understand what you're saying, but I think if we are planning to extract more water from the Gold Street well, we have to get a new source of water approval then.
Yeah, basically the 160, that's what this is for, to get into the permitting process. This isn't to build a building.
Okay, I...
This is basically do the yields and speak with DEP. We need, this well's probably two or three years out.
Okay. Having sat through town meeting last year when well two, when the well two went in, I, I have a different recollection. I don't quite...
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion, pro or con, with respect to Article 19? If you vote yes, you're voting to approve. Article 19 is printed... Do you wish to speak for or against, or just ask a question?
Do you have the question microphone?
We don't have one. We're saving money for that next year.
Okay, that's why, that's good. See, you're very progressive. John Lavin, 11 Barnstable Road. Just on the retained earnings that it's been certified, I've said it before, is there any way any of this information can be put online? The budget, I mean, you know, because I'm going to be keeping adding up, we got 810, then we're going to take, we keep on taking away. So what are we going to end up at the end of the day if all these are approved?
Thank you. Is, your question is to the, to the budget generally, or to the...
No, it's just, it's just, is, looking on the DPW website, there's zero information about water, zero. Because I, I went there to try and figure, you know, do the homework, if you will, and it says $810,000 or $810,000 retained, return earnings were certified. So obviously, there's a budget to go along with everything here. And there's 60% of us roughly in town that are water takers, and if, there's, I, there's no way of getting the information that I know of, except for going down to your office, I guess.
Thank you. The question is, can you put the information online, Mr. Vito?
Yes, we can. The retained earnings are certified every year. The number of A-10 is our certification last fall. There will be a limited amount of funds in retained earnings once we finish these articles. I think we're down to probably around, I'm going to say 165,000, once we complete all the articles. But 250,000 of this money is reimbursed back to us through payments and through billing and payments. We can, I'll look at the website, but I mean, we can put some financials on it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vito. Any further discussion at the no microphone? Anybody wish to speak?
I just have one question. That was just kind of a general comment, just on, just trying to get it on, but, so last year, we spent 300 grand at this site. Is this, this, so this is just for DEP permitting now? Wouldn't you need the permitting prior to putting the 300 grand last year?
Mr. Vito?
The 300,000 we spent last year, we actually drilled and have a site, I mean, have a well that's online and does yield 300,000. The reason it's called a supplement well, it's not a permitted well, it can be used in lieu of the existing well. Last year, we were looking, this was here because we need to find another source of water, permanent source of water. The supplement well was the quickest way we can ensure the town that if we were in trouble, that we had a supplement well to back up the existing well.
Thank you, Mr. Vito. Does anybody else wish to speak to the yes microphone who's not yet had a chance to speak? Does anybody wish to speak at the no microphone who's not yet had a chance to speak? If you vote yes, you're voting, if you vote aye, you're voting in favor of approving Article 19 as printed in the warrant. If you vote no, you're voting against that proposal. All in favor of Article 19 say aye?
Aye!
Oppose no?
No!
It is a majority vote. Article 20, Mr. Sneed, Advisory Board?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we approve Article 20 as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Sneed, for the advisory board recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, this article provides funding of $260,000 in expenses associated with the improvement of Route 115 project. This is the water component of that project. It's necessary to relocate some of the pipes, among other things, which I'm sure Mr. Vito can explain in greater detail. Of this 260,000, 160,000 will be charged to the Water Department. The other 100,000 roughly will be recovered from landowners through betterments. So this also is not operating budget for the town. It is Water Division expenses, as well as recovered from landowners.
Thank you, Mr. Sneed. Article 20 is submitted by the DPW. Does anybody from the DPW wish to speak to the article? Mr. Vito, DPW?
These funds will be used in conjunction with the 115 transportation improvement project, which is scheduled to be advertised in July of this year. That project's a $7.2 million federal project to reconstruct 2.7 miles of 115. What we're doing with the water funds, there's two issues here. One, we want to put all the services out to the lots, the existing lots are there, so we don't have excavations in the road once it's been reconstructed. Some of the water mains have to be extended out in the intersections and things of that nature. That's the 160,000 that we're projecting for inspection in also construction of those services. 100,000 of this 260 is going to be a betterment charge back to a landowner. It's a commercial piece of property that has a vertical site distance problem. To develop it, it came out through the planning board review. We have talked to the landowner. We are going to perform the construction that he needs to build his site through this project, through the state, and he's going to pay 100% betterment back to the town under the waterman, under the Water Betterment Act.
Thank you, Mr. Vito. Town Council has raised a question on the Article 20. It has three choices: raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or borrow. We need to clarify that. Is this a proposal to transfer from the available water proceeds?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Would you accept as a friendly amendment to strike the phrases "raise and appropriate" in the first line of Article 20, and strike the words "or borrow" in first line of Article 20? So that first line now reads, "to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds for the DPW Water Division the sum of..." Is that accepted as a friendly amendment at the suggestion of Town Council?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion against Article 20 as amended by that friendly amendment? Any further discussion in favor of Article 20 by anyone who's not had a chance to speak? Sir? Feel free to line up at the microphones if you anticipate wishing to speak or to ask a question. Mr. Boucher, just a question?
Yes, it is.
You can go to this microphone then, sir? We're, we're working on a question microphone for next...
[laughing] This now reads "from available funds." Previous articles have said "from DPW Water Division retained earnings."
Mr. Hathaway, Town Administrator?
Can we call this a question?
Okay. You have to turn that on.
Can you hear me out?
No.
Mr. Boucher, thank you. Mr., the Town Council and I were just talking about that. I think we would propose a friendly amendment that'd be from retained earnings.
So the, the proposal on Article 20 from the DPW is to amend this to conform to the prior article. Instead of referring to transfer from available funds, to specifically say "transfer from the DPW Water Division retained earnings." Is that accepted as a friendly amendment, Mr. Vito?
Yes, it is, Mr. Moderator.
So Article 20 is amended, now reads in that first line, "to see if the town will vote to transfer from the DPW Water Division retained earnings for the DPW Water Division the sum of $260,000." Any further discussion against that proposal? Any further discussion in support of that proposal? Does anybody else wish to speak who's not had a chance to speak on this article? Sir?
John Lavin, I was just saying, look at the, what's going to be given out now, we have $810,000, and we're going to be giving away approximately 500 out of retained earnings. It's, yeah, it's 260, we're still going to get 100,000 back, but it's going to be proportional as we go along. So there'll be 300,000 left in retained earnings?
Yes, sir.
But what if something happens? We got to go borrow?
That is a possibility.
Thank you. Any further discussion by anyone who's not had a chance to speak? On Article 20, it requires a majority vote to transfer from the DPW water retained earnings. The sum is stated in the warrant. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve the article as amended. If you're voting no, you're voting against that. Requires a majority vote. All in favor of Article 20 say aye?
Aye!
Oppose no?
No!
It is a majority vote. Article 21, Mr. Birmingham, Advisory Board?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 21 as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Birmingham with the advisory board recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, Articles 21, 22, and 23...
That microphone, a step closer to the mic, John?
Articles 21, okay?
No, so the mic has died on us again? John?
Jack, what'd you do?
Just turn it up a little bit. Talk, John. Speak into the mic.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Articles 21, 22...
That was the Verizon Network, by the way.
Articles 21, 22, and 23 implement recommendations from the 2007 master plan in a recent wastewater feasibility study. Article 21 adds four parcels to the B1 district and town center.
Thank you. Any, this is a zoning matter. Does the planning board wish to make its recommendation? Assuming you're going to the yes mic?
I'll walk all the way over. The planning board actually would like...
Say your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Tom Burke, Preston Avenue, from the planning board.
Chairman of the planning board.
Exactly. The planning board would actually like to make a substitute motion on this. We want to add, to amend the zoning map in there as well. There was a technicality that was left out. Otherwise, we would be in favor of this article.
So, so the proposal, Mr. Burke, is, is to rezone not just the parcels, but also to, to amend the map itself to conform to those zoning changes?
Correct.
Just a moment.
Is there, is that accepted as a friendly amendment by the zoning bylaw study committee, the proponent of Article 21? Mr. Nicodemus? No, it's not. Who, who is from the zoning bylaw study committee, the proponent of this article? Mr. Burke, you'll have to file that as a, as a motion to amend then, but we'll have, we have the benefit of your recommendation. You can move to amend now, or you can move to amend later in the debate.
So the proposal is submitted by Mr. Burke of the planning board to amend Article 21 before the words "according to the town center map" to say, and to...
Amend the map.
And to amend the town's, the zoning map to conform thereto? The proposal is written, Article 21, is to change the zoning designation of certain parcels, but the article did not also update the zoning map to reflect that change. So the proposal by the planning board is to not just reference the parcels, but also to include the reference to the map, the zoning map as well. If you vote, if you're in favor of, of adding the language to reference amending the map, you would vote in favor of the amendment. If you oppose amending the map, then you would vote no. Any further, in support of the motion to amend the map, anything further by the planning board? Mr. Burke, are you content with your remarks?
Yes.
Anybody wish to speak against the proposal to amend the zoning map? Anybody wish to speak in favor of the amendment to zoning? Mr. Nicodemus, to the green mic?
Bob Nicodemus, 7 Diamond Street, and also member of the Economic Development Committee. My reason for speaking tonight really is simply to address a couple of issues on detail and anything else that might come up. I wanted to identify those...
Did you just talk about the amendment?
Excuse me, did you speak to the amendment, Mr. Nicodemus?
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Anybody wish to speak to the amendment only? The amendment on the floor is not just to refer to the parcel change, but to refer to the map itself, which is shown before you on the screen. Anybody wish to speak for or against the amendment to add the reference to the map to the pending article? If you vote yes, you're voting to amend the pending article, to include a reference to changing the map, to conform to the parcels that are referenced in the article. If you vote no, you're voting to have the article stay as printed in the warrant. All in favor of the amendment, say aye?
Aye!
Oppose no? It is amended by unanimous vote. We'll now proceed to discuss Article 21 as amended, which includes reference to the zoning map. Mr. Nicodemus?
What I would like to do is simply identify the issues that are involved here, so that people understand that we are talking about adding land which currently is commercial in use or capability. This is a lot here that is being expanded for the fire police public facilities, so we wanted to add that to the B1 district. These zones here is the Old Town Hall, which has been identified as part of the B1 district, but was not part of the zoning map. And this zone back here is in reference to the fact that the town will speak shortly on the merits of allowing a wastewater treatment to be considered, and to do that, we need to have a commercial zone to permit that to happen, and that is the reason for that particular location being added to the zoning map as a B1 district.
Thank you. Anybody wish to speak against Article 21 as amended? Mr. Trazee?
This is not so much speaking against, but I just want to be sure that you're all aware of what's going on with these, these amendments, 21, 22, and so on, is we have one group of people in town that are deciding for us exactly what shape our town is going to take, whether this town will stay what it is today, or whether it will become a Wellesley, or a Needham, or one of those other West Roxbys or something, which is the direction we're going in. So be careful how you vote, because you're not going to be able to go back, and if you like living here as much as I do, you'd like to see it remain a quiet town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trazee. Anybody wish to speak in favor of the article as amended? Anybody wish to speak further against the article as amended? Mr. Lavin, or just ask a question?
I have a question. It states in here that it's for recommendations from the master plan in a recent wastewater feasibility study. Can you give us some explicit detail?
feasibility study. Can you give us some explicit detail of what the study was? It was a $36,000 study, I guess a year ago or whatever. What they recommended, if you can give us some detail on it?
Thank you, Mr. Nicodemus.
That study, which will be part of a next article, deals with looking at the town center relative to the capacity of the town center to allow a wastewater system to occur, and whether or not there was a feasible location, one, for a gravity location to a wastewater treatment facility, and two, the capacity of the town-owned land to accept discharge. And these circles here indicate that, which will be described a little bit later, but by and large, it says in that feasibility study that we determined that it was physically feasible to both bring wastewater to those locations, to treat it, and to discharge it safely into the recreation fields, and still use the recreation fields as they are today.
Thank you. Any further questions or debate, negative or positive, sir? Mr. Tallaman?
Jay Tallerman, Chickadee Drive. Give you the minority report from the zoning bylaw study committee. This, I actually requested as a member of the zoning bylaw study committee, these studies when we were working on this, so that I could know if in fact there was some feasibility. We were told that they weren't ready at the time, so I didn't feel we could make an informed decision. This is a rezoning article that seems innocuous enough on its face, but it's actually the first step in several steps that would be required to bring sewer to town center, except for the moonscape properties, because they have their own sewer already. So there's a small number of parcels that would benefit in town center at a fairly sizable cost in the millions. There's been no studies provided to the zoning bylaw study committee, or prior to town meeting, or otherwise, to say what the revenue would be, how long it would take to make that money back. There's been no case made for that. I think it's premature. There's been no study to indicate that if we bring that sewer in, that the existing businesses can expand, or will expand, to a point where the economic benefits would offset the massive costs, both for startup and construction, which is in the millions, as well as the tens of thousands of dollars required every year to maintain such a system. And last, I'd point out that if we are going to, as is shown on the plan, devote a substantial amount of the Freeman Centennial Campus for wastewater treatment, leaching field, we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot a little bit for potential future expansion. So I'd urge people to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tallaman. Does anybody else wish to speak at the yes microphone in support of Article 21? Anybody, just line right up if you'd like to speak, Article 21. Anybody at the yes microphone? Just state your name and your street, please.
Beth Gilbert, Castle Road, Chair of the Norfolk School Committee and Member of the Norfolk School Building Committee. We have started to work on our feasibility study. The engineers and the architects have been made aware of the plans for this area. They have told us that they feel the most likely site is either renovation of the current building, or renovation, an additional building in the area on the far side of the property. So it'll be the area where the baseball field is, as most of you are familiar with now. We did support, at the EDC's request, the rezoning article. That doesn't mean we're ready to commit to in any way supporting financially or in any other sense the wastewater treatment plant, because our understanding is that the SBA will not provide reimbursement for wastewater treatment facility that also serves municipal purposes. So although this has the potential to help the school project, it is by no means necessary that we do this in order to have a school project. We just didn't want to shut the door on that at this point. It's still all being designed. It's still all being discussed. And we certainly would support the rezoning.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Does anybody wish to speak at the no microphone, who's not had a chance to speak yet? Anybody else who's wished to speak? Mr. Lavin?
Question?
Go ahead, question, Mr. Lavin?
It's just, it stated that the field will stay the same. If I remember right, I don't know if they dug or anything like that, but as far as the septic field, is it, where's groundwater? And the concern is if the field has to come up if it's raised. So did they, you stated that it's going to stay the same. So did they dig to determine where groundwater was? That's the question.
Thank you. Mr. Vito for the DPW?
Butch Vito, Department of Public Works. And I think Bob kind of summed up the feasibility study fairly quick. Yes, we did do some test holes in the field to look at groundwater and those kinds of-
Can you speak up into the microphone? Just ask, can we turn up the volume a bit on the mics? Thank you.
Yes, we did do some test holes in the fields. The feasibility study did take in some test holes, looking at groundwater elevations, things of that nature. And I think, as Bob said, basically looked at the whole town center, build out capacities, flows, what would we need to do the unsuited section of the town center. As Mr. Tallman pointed out, yes, the upper section, the Borelli section, does have a 35,000 gallon a day plant. The plant that we're looking at, or that we kind of put capacities in, is 72,000 to 95,000 gallon, which includes the schools and all the municipal buildings. That was a projected build out of the town center by the zoning today. One of the other things, as far as the feasibility study, and some of the numbers I'm hearing, tens of thousands of dollars a day to run a plant. The feasibility study, basically, I think what Bob said summed up, is it feasible? Do we have a location? Do we own the property? Can we get mostly gravity flow? We're looking at 90%. There are some areas that may be not gravity flow. All that is, the feasibility study I come up with, yes, it's all positives. The financials I think you're asking for will be done in the second phase. I don't think anybody's putting anything forward, excuse me, tonight that has a financial impact to the town. I think what we're looking at tonight is to secure the properties, look at districts and things of that nature. We still have 22. Article 22, we'll probably discuss more of what you're asking, not this article.
Thank you. Just ask that people confine their remarks to Article 21, which is a rezoning article, a rezoning article, and we'll get to the other articles in due course. Does anybody wish to speak against the rezoning article, Article 21? Sir?
Hi again, Matthew Johnson on Priscilla Ave. I guess the only concern I have is, I mean, I'm looking at these maps and proposed wastewater treatment plants and whatnot, and making changes to zoning in order to accommodate a theoretical proposal. And it seems to me we're putting the cart before the horse. Wouldn't you want to actually decide if you're going to build this thing in the first place before you go ahead, you know, changing zonings all over the place? And it just seems, you know, like, I'd like to see what the big picture is before I start, you know, nickel and diming all these little changes. So I don't think, I don't think it's the right way to go about it. I'd rather see what the proposal is, you know, what the bottom line is for the entire proposal, and then attack it, you know, resolve zoning issues and whatnot. So I'd say no.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any further discussion at the yes microphone? Mr. Bullock, Building Commissioner?
Bob Bullock, Building Commissioner. I just wanted to point out here that the only parcel that isn't really just kind of cleaning up, the town owns the property at the Old Town Hall and the property to the right of it, the property behind it, that triangular piece, the piece next to the police station, we own that property as well, and the MBTA parking over here. The only parcel that seems to be in question is the piece of property that's on the school, and that's right now zone residential. And it needs to be zoned in the B1 district to put a wastewater treatment plant. The school may need, and I'm not an expert in the septic needs, but they may need a treatment plant, and they would need to rezone part of that property to put in a treatment plant if it's needed. This is, so this would handle two things. If we ever do do a sewage treatment plant for the town center, that would be where it would go, but also the school's going to need something possibly for a treatment plant as well. So you may want to just take that into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Anyone for the no microphone? Mr. Tarazi?
Again, my contention here is that we are putting the cart in front of the horse. Not a good idea to begin with, but getting away from that, referring strictly to Article 21, we're doing this before, we're discussing this, which doesn't make sense to me unless we were discussing, first of all, the feasibility study that somebody over on the other side mentioned. I, for one, do not believe it's going to be feasible, but there's no sense of me even addressing that right now, and we're talking about zoning. Let's forget about this zoning thing altogether. Vote no on that, and as these other articles come up, take them on their own merits. But without a feasibility study, without knowing where we're going, we're just taking a leap into the dark, and you don't look like the kind of people that really jump into the dark without knowing more about something. Well, somebody's laughing out there, but that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Tarazi. At the yes microphone, Mr. Sterling, advisory board?
We certainly do not want anyone to leap into the dark. This is a rezoning. We're not building wastewater treatment plants. We're changing the boundaries of a district so that in some future scenario, the town may choose, or a developer may find it easier to develop in that area. None of the options that this zoning change create are defined for us. The town will make decisions at each step of the way. It will be reviewed by the various boards, and the advisory board will come forward to you to describe its views on whether or not it's something we should be doing. But let me suggest to you that the reason we are doing this, what appears to be paperwork now, is really that we, is the problem that we're not going to discuss until the 16th of June. The problem is that the town is dramatic, is going to be dramatically underfunded. We will cut services in substantial and dramatic fashion. I will make that prediction, not knowing which of the three budgets will be approved at the state level. They're all more or less god awful. The problem will not end next year. It will not end the year after. It is a continuing issue for the town. By encouraging the options for development, we will create opportunities for tax revenue, which is not borne by homeowners in the town of Norfolk. That is what this and several other articles do tonight. They create options which may, and we hope in the long run, will generate revenue for the town, therefore supporting the schools, the police, all these wonderful services that we really want, and avoid, hopefully, the painful opportunity we have to pay taxes on our homes. That is what is made available by these and several related motions this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sterling. Any further discussion at the red microphone? Mr. Lutz?
The red microphone?
Red, not, red, blue-
Dave Lutz from Pondy Road. I just wanted to reiterate what some of the previous speakers said. We aren't sure if we're going to, why are we doing this? We may need to build wastewater treatment for the school. That wouldn't necessarily require rezoning. The only reason we're doing this is because there's a consideration for a wastewater treatment plant. I have not seen any information on why we should do that. Why don't we wait?
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. Anyone at the green microphone? Mr. Roach?
Dave Roach, School Street, also a planning board member. You know, I applaud this gentleman over here. He's saying he wants to live in a small town all the rest of his life. That's great. The reason that we're on planning boards and we're on committees is try to develop the town in a way where we can bring in some tax revenue, which can bring in some commercial development, reasonable commercial development. And the only way you can do that would be the possibility of a sewage treatment plant and possibly a stormwater system. Now, under our current restraints with septic systems and stormwater, as it has to be handled on each and individual sites, that obviously limits the size of the buildings that can be built, the amount of parking that can be built. We don't have a huge amount of commercial property in the downtown area. This would give the ability to these commercial developers to go in and maybe build a little bigger building, a little bit more parking, because now they'd be contributing to a municipal system. This is definitely, this is definitely baby steps. We're in the beginning of this thing, and in order to do this, we need to do some of this rezoning and look at that. It's not going to be a Newton, it's not going to be a Wellesley. We're in Norfolk. We don't have the land for that, but I think some reasonable commercial development in the downtown is what we need. And, you know, everybody, look at your taxes. Look at our tax base. It's all residential. We have a very small capability of bringing in commercial taxes and commercial revenue. But I think we should take advantage of what we can and move forward and look at what the possibilities are in developing the downtown. You stick your head under a rock and you can stay there as long as you want, but if you want to move forward and develop the town and get the best we can out of it, we need to look at these other possibilities.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Any further discussion at the red microphone? Mr. Tallaman?
Thank you. First correction, Butch, I said tens of thousands of dollars a year, not a day. In 2007, when we discussed initially what we would do with the money for the feasibility study, there was a request in the roundtable to produce the type of assessor's data, Board of Health data, and other data to determine whether or not this would ever pay for itself. That data to date, and I've been asking since as a member of the zoning bylaw study committee for the last few years, it still is not forthcoming, so we are still taking a shot in the dark, unless someone can produce a slide here tonight that proves that out. Now, Mr. Sterling is much smarter than I am, especially with numbers, and he suggests that this is necessary because we need that economic revenue. Mr. Roach suggested that this is the only way. He was unequivocal on that, to bring that in. To date, there's been no nexus between, drawn between, build a sewer system, and the businesses will come to prove it out. I know this seems like just a baby step. That's a step we don't have to take until someone proves the case here. The case has not been proven for it yet. I'd still suggest voting no for now. They can bring it back later when they prove the case. They haven't yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to speak at the green mic who's not yet had a chance to speak? Mr. Nicodemus, I have you down, is answering one question and speaking affirmatively. If you'd like to speak for your second time, you're welcome to speak to the green mic.
With regard to what Mr. Sterling said and in response to what we heard here, there is a master plan. They did do a study. It did do a financial analysis. It did do a land development capacity analysis. It has recommended, that master plan '92 and 2007, that a wastewater treatment facility be considered. We determined that it was feasible to be considered in this location, on town land. And with those issues, we think that the case should be there. If you want to see this town grow beyond what it is today, you will need to do something like that. We'll speak to that at the next article.
Thank you. Any further discussion at the red microphone? Mr. Backenowski?
Andy Backenowski, Doggish Avenue. Just sort of a comment. To follow what Mr. Bullock said about the water use at the school, currently we use about 2,200 gallons a day. I do sit on the new school building committee. I'd like to thank Mrs. Gilbert for being a little more eloquent in the position that I was going to be less eloquent. Bottom line is, the new proposed, whatever happens there, whether it's a rebuild or a new school, projected water use based on the simple square footage is about 3,000 gallons a day. If we try and tweak that to look at gray water recovery and other water conservation methods, it might be about half that, or actually less than we are right now. Those of you who endured my 20-minute presentation last meeting, or last town meeting, I do wastewater work as one of my many responsibilities. A lift station to get from the school to the wastewater treatment plant, when you're looking at 1,500 gallons a day, becomes real dicey in terms of making the numbers work really well. So I understand what people are saying. The terminology in here about enabling the Freeman from tying in, I don't think it's going to happen, just based on what we're thinking. I personally would wish someone from the Economic Development Committee and more proponents of the wastewater treatment plan to come to the school committee, the school building committee with more details. And also, Mr. Vito, just so you know, in 10 years of doing public bidding and $40 million worth, every single feasibility study I've had has always had costs associated with it. They've been ranges. I would suggest you get your money back on some of that. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Backenowski. Any further discussion at the green microphone? Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Moderator, you had it right.
Moderator. Say, first off, if you know me, we don't want taxes, okay? We don't want any more heartache when it comes to taxes, and this whole wastewater idea is getting blown out of proportion, all right? You have to take the first step, and that is to get this zoned so that we can start looking at the further steps. But you're trying to kill it before to kill it before it even gets the first step. Now, let me talk about the school building committee. You said nobody was there. I was there, because I'm on the Economic Development Committee. I'm also on the Board of Health, all right? The current system is failed. The school building architect, when I asked him, I said, "Who pays for this connection to the septic?" He says, "The town does." So, if we get a new school, we're going to have to spend 1.5 to $2 million for a septic system for the school. Comes out of the taxpayers' money, all right? So, unless we start to conjoin these forces, and maybe someday down the road, maybe we can get this wastewater treatment facility in that'll service both the school and all the owners of the property that may want to move in and develop the situation. Now, you can shake your head and say no, but the facts are is that this is what the school building authority has told us, is that we need to have a ready system to accept waste, and right now it's not feasible.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Anybody else at the red microphone who's not had a chance to speak, sir?
My name is Paul Kimmendel. I'm on the Design Review Board, and I recently ran for the planning board. I guess my concern is, just over the weekend, I was down in Harwich, and I guess Harwich is proposing a similar plan, or they're doing stormwater studies. And I believe, I haven't heard any costs, like what the town would actually have to pay to put this into the works, but I think it's, I want to say, over $10 million for Harwich, and I'm not sure in the comparison to the size of towns. But that seems like a large upfront fund to come up with to maybe get a burden 15 years down the road, when some of us who live in town might not even live here anymore. I probably plan to live here for the rest of my life. And I guess when I was running for the planning board, my concern was that I don't think we can develop. I'm all for the, you know, Freeman Centennial having its own, you know, connecting to stormwater and running stormwater, but I just don't see how we can have enough commercial in the B1 district to support and give us a tax break. I know we have Route 1, so I guess I'm just here to say, I just, I don't see it feasible to do a stormwater system in the downtown district.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmendel. Anybody else at the green microphone? Ms. Gilbert for the second time?
Thank you.
I note, by the way, there's a new town bylaw that allows everybody to speak twice on any motion at town meeting, so everybody can speak up twice on any motion. Ms. Gilbert for the second time?
I'd just like to address Mr. Nelson's comments about the, what happened in the discussion with the building committee. It is not at all clear that we are required to put in a wastewater treatment plant, because that has a lot to do with the gallons per day, as Andy said, and that still has not been completely analyzed, because we still don't know what our project is going to be. Certainly, we've been told, although the current systems are probably inadequate and need to be replaced, it is more cost-effective to put in a new septic plant, if that is adequate to the flow that we anticipate once the project's engineered. We're not at that point yet. We don't know that. Whether it's the best option for us economically or not, it's possible that we might be able to tie into this, but it does need to be built before we can plan on that. And if our planned timeline for the school goes ahead, that means fairly soon. I just know that we won't be able to pay for the wastewater treatment plant out of the SBA funds.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Any further comments by anyone at the red microphone? Mr. Boucher has not yet spoken for his first time on this, so, Mr. Bakunowski, if you could just defer for a moment?
You keep track, Mr. Moderator?
Step right up to the microphone, please.
Certainly. First, I would like to know where the $1.5 million figure came for a septic system. Is there some verification for that? Second question I have, do we have any agreement from any of the business property owners that they will tie into a prospective system, and if they don't, what will be the cost to the town?
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Is there a speaker on the first time you wish to speak, sir? Come forward to a microphone?
Mr. Ponder?
Yes.
Point of order. We're spending a lot of time...
Stand up, please.
We're spending a lot of time discussing the merits of the wastewater treatment plant cost. That's called this article.
Thank you. The point of order is overruled. Generally, the comments have to conform to the scope of the article, but it's been pointed out by the proponents that the purpose of this zoning change is to accommodate future wastewater or stormwater purposes. So, I'm going to allow a little bit of latitude here. If you're against the stormwater and the wastewater, then you'd want to vote against this. If you support that, then you'd want to vote for it. I'll allow a little latitude, and in the later articles, I'm going to ask you not to repeat. All the same articles you made with respect to this article will know people's positions. So, the point of order respectfully is overruled. Any further discussion in support of Article 21? Yes, Mr. Weddleton?
John Weddleton, Seven Trill Side Way. I did an analysis, financial analysis, of the B1 district three years ago for the Selectmen. It's easy to look at the center of town and say there's not revenue, et cetera. I did a financial study of every B1 lot in the center, counting Paul Borelli's, which accounted for approximately $250,000 in tax revenue. The potential revenue in the center of town is around $1 million. I have the backup bylot with current zoning to back it up. Our company had under agreement last year, the Bork Building, the six acres behind Bork Building that was going to be rezoned with an egress onto Route 115, the Olafland Building. The project was a $14 million building. We were stopped by, number one, the conflict in the bylaws and the zoning, which made it impossible, and a lack of infrastructure. But I will tell you that one project on two lots that was 3.2 acres without the six acres behind us came to $220,000 in revenue. You've got lots here that are 30,000 square feet with eight townhouses allowed per lot that reel $5,000 per condominium in revenue. So, you're talking one lot yielding a possibly $40,000 in revenue from one single lot. As I said, anybody who wants to see the study, I'm welcome to furnish the numbers. We had it to the Selectmen three years ago. This has been a venture time and time again, but we joined, I joined the bylaw study committee because some of the bylaws are just in terrible conflict and make it impossible. But with the bylaw changes that you may approve or may not, with the infrastructure, there is approximately $1 million. And this, if you look at the structures, they're two stories, they're mixed-use, they're small shops, they're restaurants. Many of the products that you're looking for with restaurants, bakeries, coffee shops, you need the infrastructure. You need the gas. You need the sewer. So, nobody's going to guarantee you, everybody will build up to zoning requirements. Nobody's going to guarantee you that everything is going to happen, but if you don't start on the endeavor, it's never going to happen. And it seems like the town is concentrated. There's two sides of a budget. There's the expense side and the revenue side. How many times are we going to cut expenses, cut expenses, cut expenses? If you don't start thinking on the other side of the budget, we're probably going to have a tremendous catastrophe probably two, three years from now, because things aren't good. There is not a company, there's not a private industry that concentrates on the expense side of the budget that stays viable. You can't do it. You need both sides. So, I'll tell you, the potential is there. I have the numbers to back it up. We did the study, and time goes on, and the people in the town have no idea what they're missing out on. And it's done probably with the items we're suggesting tonight, with the zoning bylaws, and I know all the people in town, there is a will to do this. There is a market for this, but they need the help from the town. These rezoning changes will help. So, I hope you consider it. Anybody would like to see the numbers on lot by lot and square footage with current zoning, I'm happy to share them as I did with the Selectmen three years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weddleton. Any further discussion at the red microphone? Mr. Bakunowski for the second time?
Dr. Nelson, I'd like to offer you to show you some public bids for wastewater treatment plants. If you want, I'll spend the time with you. I'll take you down to the wastewater treatment plan here in Norfolk as well. It's, I can, you can learn something. I'd like to thank Mr. Weddleton for offering up that information as well, because that's kind of what I was getting to last year about how much is this going to cost. I've got some numbers. We have recent public bids for wastewater treatment plants, and everything goes along with it. And again, it's a pretty big dollar figure.
Thank you, Mr. Bakunowski. Anybody not have a chance to speak at the green microphone who wishes to speak at the green microphone? Anybody who wishes to speak at the red microphone who's not yet spoken and that wishes to speak at the red microphone? Article 21. Anybody else who has, who should ask a question at either microphone? Article 21 has been amended to strike the words in the last line according to the Norfolk Town Center map and to substitute in place of that phrase and to amend the zoning map to conform thereto. That is how Article 21 currently reads. It is a zoning change. It requires a two-thirds vote. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of changing the zoning as proposed. If you vote no, you're voting against the proposal and to keep the zoning as is. It requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
It is a two-thirds vote. I will count it at the request of any seven voters who stand for that purpose. I have seven voters standing. Mr. Cronin and Ms. Nelson, if you could come forward and be sworn. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you. If you could all please, Mr. Cronin. Thank you. If you'd like to raise your right hand. I solemnly swear that you will truthfully and accurately count the vote as we're instructed to do at the town meeting. Thank you. Mr. Rosenberg, if you could take that far side there. Mr. Parkside, over the back. If not, if you could take the middle, and I'll have you patient for when we count it on you. Mr. Cronin will take this half.
The middle?
Yeah, the middle, the middle over the left, and this one over the far side, and this one over the left.
Okay.
How many votes have the non-voters?
Oh, skip all the non-voters that are labeled. Okay. We're going to have a standing vote. I have three counters. If you, I'll tell you when to stand on the vote. If you're in the middle here, face either that aisle or this aisle. If you're facing that way, Ms. Nelson will count you. If you're facing this way, Mr. Cronin will count you, and no fair rotating. Okay. All in favor of Article 21 as amended, please stand. Counters?
Oh, and I guess I better count you guys.
22.
Mr. Rosenberg?
28.
Ms. Nelson, and I counted the advisory board, folks. Ms. Nelson?
33.
33. Thank you. Be seated. All opposed to Article 21 as amended, please stand.
19.
Mr. Rosenberg?
6.
Ms. Nelson?
6.
Thank you. Be seated. Thank you. The vote is 98 yes, 31 no. It is a two-thirds vote. Article 21 is approved. Article 22, Mr. Birmingham, Advisory Board?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 22 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Mr. Birmingham, Advisory Board recommendation?
Article 22 creates a wastewater district that shares identical boundaries with the B1 district.
Thank you. This is not a zoning article, as I recall. Is that correct, Mr. Burke? Not a zoning article? Okay, thank you. This is submitted by the Economic Development Committee. Does anybody from the Economic Development Committee wish to speak to Article 22? Mr. Nicodemus?
Bob Nicodemus, Economic Development Committee. Article 22 is now on there. We are recommending in the second slide that the language be changed slightly. If we could go back to the language, it simply says to adopt a bylaw to submit a home rule petition to the court to establish a municipal water district within the B1 district area to include Freeman Centennial School Complex, as shown on the plan, which we will show you shortly. Next plan? This is the same plan that you saw before, which ended there. This one now includes the Freeman Centennial School and the bicentennial park as an extension of that district that we just voted in on Article 21. The last slide? This is to say to you that there are currently, this is the Norfolk Commons, which has its own wastewater district. Everything that is in green here was part of the capacity study that was done in the feasibility study to identify the capacity that could be generated by full development of that area, and that was the basis for understanding whether or not the location of a wastewater district and the location of a discharge area was feasible, and that's how that was determined, and that was the area that was identified and studied.
...to submit a home rule petition to adopt a bylaw.
What we have done in the wording of the article is eliminated the words "to raise for appropriate funds." We are simply dealing with the request to go forward and get the general court to establish a municipal wastewater district. The funding issue, we would like to delay until the fall town meeting, when we have an opportunity to further present feasibility studies.
Thank you, Mr. Nicodemus. Town council has pointed out that the article is printed in the warrant is different from the article. As you've indicated, I presume that by friendly amendment, you'll need to strike out some of the alternatives. The town council recommends striking out, first line, "Adopt a bylaw." Second line, "Establish a revolving fund or take any other action necessary," so that the article reads, as printed in the warrant, "To see if the town will vote, to submit a home rule petition to the general court to establish a municipal wastewater district within the B1," and is otherwise stated in the article. Is that accepted as a friendly amendment?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from the red microphone against Article 22 as amended?
Moderator?
Against, Mr.?
No.
Anybody at the red microphone? Mr. Garrity, Board of Selectmen?
Mr. Moderator, we have a motion. We need a second.
Does anybody wish to speak in favor of Article 22 as submitted by the Economic Development Committee? Anybody wish to speak against? Mr. Tarazi?
Different article, but the argument stays the same. I hope that everyone realizes that wastewater treatment and sewage treatment are two separate entities, and that they will be handled separately. Now, on wastewater, it's my understanding that that was resolved a number of years ago, and we really shouldn't have to be worrying too much more about it unless we invite more trouble upon ourselves so that we have to increase it further. So, that's it on wastewater.
Thank you, Mr. Tarazi. Anybody wish to speak at the green microphone on Article 22 as amended? Any further discussion at the red microphone? Is what you're cooking up, Mr. Garrity, finished? Two minutes.
We will be, town, town meeting will be in a three-minute recess. I commend the baked goods outside to your attention.